At seven P M. We'll call the meeting of the common council to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to our right, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and there is equal liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll call has been taken. All right, motion to adoption of the agenda.
What did adopt the agenda is presented?
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Zoggs, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion? All in favors?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of November ninth, twenty twenty-one, and special meeting November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
So move your honor.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization to pay the bills, Mr. Dorsey.
I make a motion that we pay the bills in the amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Ritchie, to pay the bills in the amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty cents. Any additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero. Public comment? We have a presentation of four star banner from the American Legion. Ms. Marla?
I wish I really had.
We're here all night.
Hello here. We lost our own lady, but welcome. I'm district two. Thank you all for serving our community, but yes, I'm here. Usually I'm here in May, which is when I first heard the story about our mayor. Had not met you before, but he was sharing his kids. I said, you don't look old enough to have four adult children with the service, you remember? So it took a few months for us to cobble together a notion of presenting you with a banner. We so rarely get to do it. Everybody's feeling with the blue star banner. It's a flag that was starting about World War One. It was given to the families who had service before during the war. It was put in the window for everyone to be aware of the service that their child was doing during the war. And then sadly, a lot of times, we were also given a little gold star to sew over the blue star for the events lost that we had during World War One. So a hundred years later, we've come to New London, and we actually found somebody for children. Which your favorite story to the auxiliary is the one you shared again with us at our district conference at Christopher Paul's, Midup Holberg, of the little thing about the girl of ranks, the three brothers. So we thought that was our lead, so we absolutely had to present you with a banner. I don't know if the Barber family, anybody's familiar with the Barber Brothers? I don't know if that family had or not a banner, because that happened so fast with Pearl Harbor. And you get the four star. Does anybody remember? You can only get a five star, that's all they've ever done, and that's because, um, if you remember the Silverman Brothers? Sorry? Have you known more to you? Five Silverman Brothers. But we have our very own banner to present to you, to put across the window, and going to a good way, July 2021. We got a American nature family to you and your wife. Trying to keep it straight, or thank you for instilling their patriotic duty and for having four children in the service.
Thank you very much.
So at all this time, I understand one has stepped down, but we're just going to kind of wash over that. And with the war on terror, we've got soldiers and sailors in just about every country in the world. So we wanted to make sure that we say a prayer for the children, make sure they all come back and maybe they also have a mom with them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. It's a great honor. Moving on, do we have any further public comment? All right, continuing on to standing in special committees. We'll start out with the Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works met on Monday, December sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda? There's no public comment other than what's on the agenda itself. Wastewater Treatment Facility update? There are no questions on the wastewater treatment. They seem to be doing well. They've got their tanks coated and should be in full operation. Next item was public information session regarding a request to designate a loading zone parking on North Water Street. Charlie Sternberg, Ron Gagnon, Sean Fager, Gordy and Emily Sherpke shared opinions relating to a request to designate a loading zone parking on North Water Street. Mr. Sherpke explained the difficulty and safety concerns of loading and unloading carpet rolls and other products for his retail tenant at three ten North Water. Sherpke also inquired that if they could be allowed to double park in front of the building for loading and unloading purposes. She figured we'll have a discussion with the retail tenant to discuss different options and we'll report back to the board. At this time, no motion was taken. The next item was to consider for action an agreement for professional grant administration services. Mr. Hirth led a discussion on the two C D B G close grants awarded for park and street improvements. After learning about all the paperwork and reporting needed for the two grants, Chad expressed concerns with fulfilling all requirements with the current staffing levels and recommended contracting out grant administration services. Unfortunately, for the small amount for the park grant due to the requirements, the cost of engineering and grant administration services could be over fifty percent of the construction cost. Because the park grant and the street grant are separate grants, they require separate and essentially double the paperwork. Mr. Hirth stated that the staff contacted the Department of Administration to see if they could shift and combine the eighty-three thousand dollar park grant into the existing one hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two street grant to reduce the amount of grant reporting needed. The city did not receive a response for that question at the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Bisaw commented about the park grant and that it was designated for ADA improvements to several park restrooms. Mr. Hirth confirmed the importance of these ADA upgrades due to federal regulations that require local governments to continue to update and increase accessibility to existing facilities. Mr. Hirth recommended approving the agreement to hire McMahon Associates for grant administration services for the street grant at this time, and will revisit the situation once the city receives an answer on combining the two grants. Motion made and seconded. Motion carried by all. And I believe that comes up tonight. The next was review of request for additional street lighting on Tabel Boulevard. New London Utilities received a request for additional lighting on Tabel Boulevard to provide an option to increase lighting at two intersections by changing out those ornamental style lights with double gooseneck style lights. Chad Hirth drove the area at night and felt the areas between the lights would still be dark and commented that the city typically only provides lighting at designated intersections in residential areas. Adding more lights on Tabel Boulevard may open the door for additional requests for lighting throughout the city. Motion was made, that request was denied. Directors' report, there was none presented at this time. Future agenda items? We will re-discuss the loading zones on North Water Street. The next Public Works meeting will be held on either Tuesday, January fourth, in conjunction with the Park and Rec meeting, or possibly Wednesday, January fifth, if there's no finance personnel meeting. No further motion, meeting was adjourned. I move to contract McMahon and Associates for grant administration services as required for the C D B G grant for improvements on Avon, Lima and Lion Street.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington and Mr. Zoggs. Any further discussion? Cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
That is all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. We'll continue on to finance and personnel, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Personnel Committee met Wednesday, December eighth, at five fifteen. Members present are Dorsey, Fache, Barrington, Roberts and Bisaw. Also present is Mayor Mark Herter, Alderman Fred Zog and Alderman John Haas. City Administrator Chad Horrith and Finance Director Judy Radke. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Motion made by Barrington, seconded by Roberts to approve the agenda. Finance Director Radke reviewed the retirement schedule and designated funds that have been set aside for the payment of these obligations. Comparing the funds set aside each year and the estimated retirement schedule, there are currently adequate funds being set aside each year to meet the city's future obligations. The committee will continue to review the schedule on an annual basis. City Administrator Chad Horrith reviewed the proposed C S M boundaries for the riverfront property. Purpose was to clarify the boundaries of the property that would be sold to S D Swiderski for their development and what would remain city property. A motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Bisaw to recommend approval of the C S M as presented. Carried eight zero. Fourth requested that the C D B G funding be shifted from the park ADA project to the street project to avoid the doubling cost for grant administrative fees. The park ADA improvement will still be completed but using other financing sources. A motion was made by Bisaw and seconded by Roberts to recommend the council giving authorization to the mayor to send a letter to the Department of Administration requesting to move the full eighty-three thousand from the ADA park project, C D B G C L P L twenty-one dash fourteen, to the street project, C D B G C L P L twenty-one fifteen, and to close the C D B G park ADA improvement grant. Carried eight zero. Financial Director Radke reviewed the monthly financial reports. Finance Director's report was discussed. Radke requested that the January finance meeting be canceled unless a finance or personnel issue needed to be addressed. The committee was in agreement. There being no public comment or further business, motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Fache to adjourn. The next regular finance committee meeting will be held in council chambers on February second at five fifteen. Need approval of the license list as in your packet.
So move.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Barrington for approval of license list. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero.
Also look for approval of the list of election officials for terms. For the term of one-one, twenty, twenty-two through twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, as presented in your packet.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Herter for approval of list of election officials for term of one-one, twenty-twenty-two through twelve-thirty-one, twenty-thirty-three. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried with nine yes and one abstained.
Also look for authorization for the mayor to send a letter to the Department of Administration requesting to move the full eighty-three thousand from the ADA parks project, C D B G C L P L twenty-one fourteen, to the street project, C D B G C L P L twenty-one fifteen, and to close C D B G park ADA improvement grant.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Barrington for authorization for the mayor to send a letter to the Department of Administration requesting to move the full eighty-three thousand dollars from the ADA park recreation to the streets project and to close the C D B G parks ADA improvement grant. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero.
Also look for preliminary view and approval of proposed C S M boundaries for future sale of the riverfront property.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, I didn't catch the second. Mr. Fache, for preliminary review and approval, proposed C S M boundaries for the future sale of the riverfront property. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Zoggs. Mr. Vote please. Motion carried, ten zero. Thank you, Zoggs.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Moving right along to Park and Recreation, Mr. Bisaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. Park and Rec Committee meeting met with special meeting on Tuesday, November sixteenth. Meeting was called to order at five thirty. Motion was made by Zoggs and seconded by Herter to move forward to approve the agenda. Motion was carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Review the bid tab and recommend contract award for railroad track removal. The bid tabulation for the railroad track removal on the Newton Blackmore Trail project was reviewed. Two bids were submitted with Radke contractors providing the lowest overall bid on the project. In order to follow the C D B G construction requirement, the straight section of unused railroad tracks on the most eastern end of the project site will be removed. Motion was made by Herter and seconded by Zoggs to move to reward Radke contractors in the amount of forty-two thousand, two hundred, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty cents for railroad track removal for Newton Blackmore Trail project. The motion was carried eleven-one, Roberts opposed. Review proposal for archaeological review services for Newton update on the Newton Blackmore Trail project. The committee reviewed two proposals for the C D B G required archaeological review service for the Newton Blackmore Trail. Chad Horrith explained that the area stated the lower proposal from the U W of Milwaukee did not have all the requirement elements and was incomplete. Midwest Archaeological Consultants' proposal was complete and for the amount of two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by Zoggs, move to approve agreement with Midwest Archaeological Consultants for the archaeological review services for the Newton Blackmore Trail in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The motion was carried eleven-one, Roberts opposed. There being no further discussion, Bisaw made the motion, Zoggs seconded, move to adjourn at five forty-one. Motion was carried by all. All I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bisaw. Can you follow that up with the Planning Commission?
The City of London Planning Commission met on Monday, November twenty-second. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. A motion was made by Steingraber to adopt the agenda and seconded by Besett. Motion was carried by all. The October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one minutes were reviewed. A motion to accept the minutes was made by Besett and seconded by Steingraber, carried by all. The pre-plot review was provided and discussed for the Retzloff Beckett Road project. A motion made by Mayor Mark Herter to approve the pre-plot proposal, seconded by Walbrook, carried by all. A review of future agenda items was discussed. The next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-seventh, at five fifteen. A meeting has since been rescheduled for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five fifteen. A motion was made to adjourn by Steingraber, seconded by Walbrook, carried by all. Meeting adjourned by Chairman Bisaw at five thirty-five. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bisaw. Move right along into the Economic Development Committee, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're going on an economic development committee met Tuesday, November thirtieth, at five fifteen. Members present, Dorsey, Bishop, Fache, Kapitsky, Haas and Thompson, Bisaw. Excuse me, we're Lathrop and Wolf. Others present, Mayor Mark Herter, Tim Roberts, Bob Bisaw, Chad Horrith, Jeff Hanskey and Nick Schaefer. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Kapitsky, Haas approved the agenda. October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one minutes were reviewed and approved by Zoggs, Kapitsky. Bishop introduced Nick Schaefer, who has started a new screen printing business out of his home called Macaport. Bishop started the conversation by pointing out that many businesses, including Apple, Google, Amazon, have all started out of home-based. It's important to understand that some of the things that a new business owner like Nick has experienced so that the city can be good ambassadors and help grow the city. Schaefer provided his story and background in the screen printing industry and pointed out that he never intended on starting a new business. As a cross-country and track coach for the London School District, Schaefer was purchasing shirts in bulk for his teams, but many times ended up with costly leftovers. Schaefer ended up purchasing some basic equipment to produce the exact number of shirts he needed for his team to save money. Several years later, the tennis coach asked Schaefer if he would print the shirts for his tennis team. Then requests from other school groups increased and Schaefer eventually thought there was a need in the community for his service and decided to start his own business. Schaefer stated that he knew how to produce shirts, but had no idea how to start a business. Schaefer approached Associated Bank for a business checking account and Bishop suggested contacting a small business development center in Stevens Point for assistance. Schaefer stated that the small business development center was a huge help in giving him all the information to start a new company. From that point, Schaefer's business started growing with additional sales to local and London organizations. Schaefer stated that he intends to join in London Chamber of Commerce for additional networking opportunities. Eventually, as things grow, Schaefer intends to move into a commercial building in London. The committee thanked Schaefer for his story, encouraged him to reach out to staff in the chamber once he is ready for his next evolution. Fourth and Kapitsky led a discussion about recent contact with local businesses and the challenges many companies are facing with recruiting and retaining employees. Hurst stated that committee keep the issue in their thoughts and think of ways to help London businesses overcome this challenge. The city will not assist with the direct recruitment of employees, but rather, maybe the city's role is to continue to market the community as a great location to live and work. Fache provided insight from Fox Cities Chamber training he attended, where he saw a few speakers, one of which has been highlighted on a PBS University Place episode. In both cases, speaker talked about the importance of workforce housing, transportation and other employment challenges, but more importantly, stressed the factor of negative labor force numbers with more people retiring than coming into the workforce. Fache provided web links for the committee to view the University Place episodes. Chamber Director Business Report. New business update. Seth Isaac, owner of Creations, S I C Woodworks, opened a location at twenty-two West North Water Street. Mirage Building at five-ten West North Water Street is now for sale. Kapitsky and Hurst met with Tyson Foods on November tenth. They have about two hundred open positions currently. The corporate has required COVID vaccinations for all employees. The Grant Cinema Theater has a new manager and is planning on opening soon. City Administrator Report. Horrith reported that the city did fill the open video and marketing producer petition. Josh Vistey has accepted a role and begin employment on December sixth. Committee reviewed speakers and agenda items for future meetings. There was no public input. The next committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at five fifteen. Kapitsky and Haas moved to adjourn, carried by all. I have the W C E D C December report as in your packet, and that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. All right, next on the agenda is minutes and reports that were distributed in your packet. We'll consider them to stand as read. Move on to reports of officers and recent events announcements to the public. Mayor is up first. I would again like to thank the American Legion Auxiliary and Ms. Marla for the banner. It is a great honor and will be displayed with honor. Thank you. With that said, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very happy new year and please make smart decisions and choices and have a safe driver. Move on to City Administrator.
Thank you, Your Honor. Coming up to the end of the year, there isn't really too much exciting things to report on right now. Many of the office, including myself, are just working on a lot of year-end tasks before December thirty-first, reports to the state and things. However, I do want to introduce and welcome our newest team member. Josh Vistey started last week as our new video and marketing producer. Obviously, this is the start of his second week. He's in the back cable room learning how to switch the cameras around. So I'll hopefully get him to come up and if he hasn't already, meet everyone. But I want to let everybody know that he's on board, making videos, and we're hopefully in the next week, I'm going to be pumping out videos like we used to six months ago. So we want to welcome Josh to our team. Other than that, I just want to also wish everybody a Merry Christmas as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Up next, the Utility Manager, Mr. Besett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Electric crews in the area have started trimming trees around our electric wires. You'll notice them working south of the river and east of Pearl Street this year. The commission has approved water installation plans for Celestial Hills and also the water relocation plans, the Wolf River Avenue redevelopment. Utilities is waiting for D N R approval for the injection locations at our wellhouses for polyphosphates. I will be attending the W P P I Board of Directors' meeting this Thursday. On December twelfth, at eleven A M., Electric Department responded to a broken cutout at Division and Hancock Street. That outage affected approximately fifteen customers and took the guys about an hour to restore power. And then just a friendly reminder, as the winter snow comes to our customers, if they could please help out the utility and the fire department and clean out the hydrants around their areas, it would be greatly appreciated. And then I'd like to recognize Jack Orshide, Carson Schram for one year of service, and Kevin Schram for twenty-eight years of service. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besett, and thank those for their service as well. Chief of Police, Mr. Schlader.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had two anniversaries, Kathy Martin's fourteen years and Josh Wilson's twenty years. And then I also wanted to report that last week I was asked to stop down to talk to the carpet store. I talked to Billy down there. And we were able to work something out in the meantime to make sure that they're able to get their carpet in and out as they have for the past few years. And it was her opinion that if the city wanted to wait to redo anything until the engineers get a chance to look at the downtown area, that that was fine with her. So I guess that's my report on that. And I also just want to remind people that with the snow coming, make sure you keep your cars off the road at night. We are writing tickets for... We are writing tickets for vehicles that are parked on the roads. And if it comes down to it where they get snowed in and the street department needs them towed, we will have them removed for them. So please watch that, keep an eye on it, both downtown and around the city streets, because it is something we are watching for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlitter, and also thank your staff for their years of service. Moving on to Ms. Art, she will take care of the Director of Parks and Recreation and the Public Works.
Yeah, actually, Chief just covered what we need for the Department of Public Works with the street closing. That's very helpful. Just commend everybody that did a great job at it this weekend. Drove downtown and there was not a car, so that's awesome. Thank you so much. In the rec, parking rec world, we are looking for women's volleyball teams for a league to start in January. If anybody's interested, they can call our office for that. We also have a ukulele class starting in January at the senior center. So that's something new and exciting that we're bringing to the seniors in New London. And then the most exciting news that I have for the senior citizens of New London is that we are starting back up our congregate dining service with the Wapaka County Meals Service. So they will be coming back to the senior center December twenty-eighth, I believe, and that, we have not had a congregate meal since March of twenty twenty. So we're very happy to have them coming back into our facility. And then, other than that, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas from the Park and Rec Department.
Thank you, Mrs. Art.
Thank you.
Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfert, you're up next.
Thank you, Your Honor. All I have tonight is a couple of service anniversaries. Anthony Romberg, two years, and Logan Langle, two years. Thank you.
And I thank both of them for their years of service as well.
Yep, I just wanted to draw attention to the paperwork for anyone interested in running for office. Also included in your packet again this month. I've added the campaign finance registration instruction sheet, if anyone has any questions on how to fill out that form. And tax collection has started in full force in the clerk's office. Everybody in, in the city should have received their tax bills from both Wapak and Otagamee County. The bank is no longer a collection site, so if you want to pay your taxes in person, you would need to come to City Hall. Our hours are seven-thirty AM until four-thirty PM, Monday through Thursday, and on Fridays from seven-thirty AM until eleven-thirty AM. People can also pay their taxes by mail, or we have a drop box at our door here on Shaiaktin and at the intersection of Shaiaktin and Shawno Street. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Lukey. Any other comments? Looking for a motion to adjourn? Motion. Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.